I'm going to call the meeting to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our council meeting tonight. Will you call the roll, please?
Bachman.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Lieberman.
Here.
And Stevens.
Here. And we do have a little change to our posted agenda. We have a special presentation by RTA, and we're going to postpone that a little bit and go ahead and get the meeting started. So will you read the report, clerk? Clerk's report.
You have the council meeting minutes of February 2nd, 2023.
I'll move for approval.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Looks like we have two items of old business.
Mayor, just as a point of procedure, at the last meeting, council moved or voted to table both of those resolutions. So if we could have a motion and vote to untable them, and then what I would suggest is you can have your discussion, and then at the end of your discussion, then a motion can be made to enact one of those. And then the other one, you know, if somebody wants to make a motion on the second one, they can, but if there's no motion for the second one, then that would just die. So the first thing we'd need is a motion to untable.
I move we take electrical aggregation off the table.
Second.
Motion to remove the old business, both resolutions from the table by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, they're both off the table now. And so is there any discussion? Let's go from council first. No discussion. So I think both parties are here, and so I'd like to give you, you know, if you want, about maybe two or three minutes for to speak if you want to say anything. If you don't want that, if you don't, that's okay, but... Okay. Step up the podium and just identify yourself and your company and tell us.
Council, I'm Jay Weiscurcher. I'm the Executive Director of the Miami Valley Communications Council. As you all know, we are a council of governments, so the projects that we work on are typically conducive to collaboration, and this aggregation project is no different. We were approached by a number of communities who felt that their communities were ready to take on aggregation last summer. And so we did our due diligence in terms of interviewing some firms who could help us with that. We made a decision to work with Palmer Energy out of Toledo. They have an affiliation. They're a service provider to the Ohio Municipal League. And in a very short period of time, we have any number of communities in this area who have pledged to work with us on both electric and natural gas aggregation. Right now, we have about eight communities that are going through the process of approving the government governance regulations and the required public hearings. We anticipate that by the end of March or thereabouts, we'll have about eight or nine communities that have done that. And at that point in time, we will go out to for an RFP for electric aggregation, hope to have quotes probably latter part of April or thereabouts. Then we will go through the process of attaining RFP proposals for gas aggregation, probably late summer, early fall. At some point in time, there are other cities in the area that have pledged a willingness to work with us. Some are currently involved in other aggregation programs or have aggregation on their May ballot. So that's something that we anticipate that as communities go through their process, that we will have other members join us. And our bylaws are written in such a way that it's possible to do that. So a community doesn't have to be with us on the front end. They can join it at any time. So that's all I have unless anyone has any questions. I've got two representatives here from Palmer Energy in case you have any detailed questions.
Jay, could you tell us which communities have signed on to work with MVCC?
Yes. Right now, we've got commitments from the city of Kettering, city of Miamisburg, West Carrollton, Troy. Yeah, help me, fellas. Englewood. Centerville. That's all I can think of right off the top of my head, Amanda.
I think Trotwood was on the list as well.
And Trotwood, yes.
Will whoever we choose be at those public meetings that we have to have, Amanda?
Yes. I am not.
You couldn't handle it. Don't misunderstand what I'm saying there.
I can make stuff up.
You mean, we've been sitting here two meetings making stuff up? That's what they've been doing?
Hi, I'm Kirk Mizerek. I'm with Palmer Energy. I've worked with the counties and the state for many years, as well as the Ohio Municipal League for many years, on their various programs. And there's just a couple of quick pointers I'd like to talk about on the program from a technical standpoint. And one is the transparency of it. If you guys choose to go with the MVCC program, you will have to put somebody on the committee that's making these decisions. It's a very important part of this. You will be put on the committee that's looking at the actual RFP results. And that's a fundamental part of our agreement with not only Jay and the MVCC, but certainly the Ohio Municipal League as well as the CCao, is that we believe very strongly in RFPs. Everything has to be RFPed out. And unequivocally, that is the best way to get the best possible pricing for you out there for your constituents on it as well. So that's something that's important that you will have to have a participating person on there with the MVCC. But again, you will be an integral part from day one in this process, and it's very transparent from day one.
We have that as part of the resolution, don't we, Martina, who our representative to the committee is going to be?
No. What, the two? Oh, I see. Yeah. Yeah, that's in there. Yes. Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the representative, not...
We'll have done it when we approve whichever one we approve here this evening.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. You'll have equal time.
Good evening. Luke Salford, I'm the Executive Director of the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council. We are also a council of governments. We are also a broker ourselves. There's no intermediary. We do everything ourselves directly. Phil Lepel is also in the room with me today. Phil's our in-house counsel and our Southwest rep. So Phil lives in Montgomery County. We actually have two staff working in Montgomery County right now on different projects. We are a council of governments that goes back to 2014. We've been doing this from the beginning. We are currently saving Dayton 30% right now. Again, 30% for the city of Dayton at the moment, which represents about $10 million for the residents. If you guys were to activate with us and do your hearings promptly, we could have a program going by May, saving residents money now. So the prices we're getting at present are cheaper than the standard service offer from AES Ohio. So we would definitely be the most expedited route of the two options you're hearing today. We are in conversations with a number of communities to grow as well. We're already a statewide organization with communities across Ohio. I can tell you here locally, Riverside's city manager recommended to council the ninth, I believe it was, to then move forward with us for electric and gas. We'll be moving forward with that most likely within the next month. So you'll have some neighbors in addition to Dayton here, some other communities I can't talk about today, and some other projects that'll be of interest to you that I can't talk about quite yet either. But I can say here locally, that's what we're working with. We also have national partnerships with organizations doing policy work from Philadelphia to Chicago, Cincinnati. So the interactions and with Honda moving in here locally, I think that would be very advantageous for the city of Clayton to be part of that relationship, a dynamic, and the expertise that we bring. Our energy attorneys are there at your disposal. We do a lot of stuff as a shared energy office. So at the end of the day, we are not an aggregator. We're a shared energy office. So it's a different way of approaching this. We also, it's our understanding, are the only option on the table right now that does net metering. So anybody in your community that has invested $20,000, $30,000 in solar panels on the roof, if they went to shop for power and participate in an aggregation program, it has to be with us now. And the reason for that's AEP Energy, which we have an exclusive arrangement with, is the only entity currently providing, again, to our understanding, after reviewing many, many contracts statewide, that has a functional net metering policy. So if folks want the independence of producing power on their own roof, that would be the option. I also want to speak to the concepts difference here. And we present you guys with a document that gets into some of the specifics to this, but the RFP model versus what we've done, which is a master supply agreement with one entity. When you think of RFP, it sounds great, but you're not buying shovels here. You're buying a commodity. So think about buying stocks on a given day in the future. We're going to buy all the Apple stock on a random day, and that's the price. So you may get the best price on that day, but is that the best time to buy it? You don't know that unless you're watching the market, which we do daily providing, or we get daily market updates from AP Energy as it relates to that to be able to provide the analysis. And if it makes sense not to start a program, we'll tell you that. We're soury. None of us make six figures. Nobody in our office does. So when we advise you guys on that, we're advising you that it's based on the interest of the community and that long-term relationship. So Dayton floated with us from May of '21 until February of '22, I believe it was. There was no program operating that whole time. Likewise, every member community is also part of our governing body. It's not through a committee. It's directly. So the transparency is across the board. We're audited on a regular basis. You are part of us. You are us. So we're a shared energy office with you on that front. We do in essence have an RFP internally with AP Energy since they get supplies. So you've got different players here, and it gets confusing real quick. You have the broker, which will be those of us around the table today. You have what's called the competitive retail energy supplier. These are names you've heard of. AP Energy, Energy Harbor, which has been in the news a lot lately, Constellation, or Dynage, really the big players in Ohio. So those are what we're talking about in RFP. For us, we take the step, one step further, because all those providers are most likely going to procure power from somewhere. So we have AP Energy do basically an internal RFP for us as they procure power to make sure we're getting honest pricing from them. So a master supply agreement, pre-negotiated contract, we have mechanisms to keep them honest. That way, we're getting fair pricing on a given day. I would also put it out there that as you're considering an RFP versus a non-RFP model, that your choices are already limited. So I mentioned AP is exclusively with us. That leaves two, maybe three other suppliers. Again, I would Google them. Some of them have been quite prominent in the news as of late. So with that in mind, truly, is it a functional RFP if you only have one or two bidders? And so we feel very good about the process we've built. We feel good about the model. We have transparency with the supplier ourselves. We have all of our entities around the table with us. They are part of that decision-making. They are able to access for resources. So we are some of the experts in this field. So whether it's our energy attorneys in filings, whether it's electric vehicle chargers, whether it's figuring out solar policy, we are there with you as an entity to support you in that work. We currently have 20 communities operating programs, not future, not prospective. We have 20 communities today, 100% saving money, 100% green energy. All of them are saving money at present. That number's going to continue to expand, the number of communities we serve. But we already have 20 communities. We already approved by the PCO for gas and electric and have longstanding programs. So if you want a program that has that staying power, if you want to build relationships beyond the Miami Valley, we love our communities in Miami Valley, but if you want to build that relationship statewide, network statewide, we welcome you to the table. The way that organizations run, it's one member, one vote on General Assembly. So if you're a village, a very small village, or if you're a city the size of Dayton, you get one vote at that table. So it's very collegial. It's very collaborative. We definitely welcome Clayton, excuse me, to a family of communities to be part of that effort as well. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
You know, I had posed some questions to the city manager about trying to get my head around all this stuff, because a lot of numbers, a lot of things, a lot of things at stake. And I know we all kind of discussed this from the standpoint of how are we saving the people in the community money in terms of what the utility bills are, and trying to be making wise, good decision in terms of how that comes into play. You know, one of my questions basically centered on the basic commodity, basically, in this case, being electricity. And you talk about brown energy, you talk about green energy, and you know, how it's provided, how you get the money, you know, where, how you broker it out, you know, how are you going to go out for bids to get it? And the only thing I have available to me is go to the Energy Ohio website that talks about energy rates for different providers. And looking at that long list of provider names, and yeah, you're talking about Energy Harbor and AEP and ClearView, I went down and just segregated out the ones that were from Ohio and just basically said, okay, give me a list of least expensive to the most expensive of those in Ohio. And Energy Harbor was basically listed in that this list is for Ohio as being the least expensive, and also looking at what their early termination fees were. And of course, this would be for somebody who was not getting involved in an aggregation effort. So I guess one standpoint is regardless of who we go with is if I look at this list and I say, okay, Energy Harbor, and they're going to tell me it's 7.8 cents for 1,000 kilowatt, how are you going to save me money if I can get that and what your rating to tell me is under aggregation is going to be the same amount, and I can get something for a term of 33 months? Are you going to save me money? Because this is the question that people are going to be asking us in terms of if I can go out there on this list and I can get something that's less than what you're providing, why are you wasting my time? And you know, quite bluntly, that's kind of like where I'm at. Regardless of where direction we go, show me how we're going to save money by going with a particular group to save money. And you know, does green energy come out being less expensive overall than brown energy, at least right now? Because that's what people are going to be looking at. It's like, how can I save money on my, how can I save money coming out of my billfold every month? Because of cost of inflation and everything else, everybody's looking at how to save money.
Take the first one first, the apples to apples. And it is very prudent to always check apples to apples to see what the current rates are, what the market is. I would also advise you as you're looking at that to read the fine print. As you're filtering through, a lot of them have variable pricing. So we often hear from residents, and sometimes it's relatives of our officials that work with us, where they've signed up for something and it wasn't what they thought it was a month later, and it's changing month to month. So do read the fine print on the terms. I would say the proofs and what we've been able to accomplish, again, 100% of our communities are saving money right now. Our goal is to beat the standard service offers. So standard service offers are what the utilities set the rates at. Roughly a third of customers shop for their own power presently. If they can get a better rate, fantastic. The way that our program's structured, at least for us, and I assume maybe the same for the others, but is that there's no early termination fee to leave the program. If mid-year you can get a better rate, great. If you want to take the action yourself, if you want to come back, and what we had in Dayton actually is people flooding into the program. We actually destroyed the market this year as far as savings. We have an estimated savings of about 30% this year. So a lot of people want to come in the program and take advantage of those savings, which is what spurred all the conversations here locally. As far as the green power conversation, so there's a couple of ways to look at this. Right now, it's actually cheaper to build renewable generation than it is to maintain fossil fuel fleets, period. But that doesn't help you if you're trying to get power tomorrow. You always have to build it. So if you still have to build it, you're talking about the intervening time. So the market moves anywhere from 2% to 8% for the last couple of months. It's slowed down a little bit, but it was moving 8% on a day. So whether you lock in power from noon or 2:00 in the afternoon, that fluctuation is going to be pretty dramatic. So on a given moment, green power by design right now in Ohio, the way that it's structured with RECs as an additional value put on top of brown power, will be a more expensive product at the exact same moment. You're not going to be buying power at the exact same moment. But apples to apples, if you're locking the exact same moment at present, it will be. The way we've structured our program, though, is folks have the ability, if they decide they don't want to participate in the green product, they can step down, stay in the ag program and do a brown power product within our aggregation program. So they're still getting the benefit of the collective buying power, but they're backing that back off. That's the most honest answer I can give you at present. Our long-term vision is for us to build renewable generation that we control and don't have to worry about what happens around the world as far as pricing, that we have the ability to have predictable costs based on renewables. Renewables are very stable on their cost curves. It doesn't matter if a refinery blows up in Texas. It doesn't matter if war breaks out in Europe. That's where this is headed. That's where we're going as an organization. But I'll say in the short term, the proof's in the pudding. We have had the savings. But if you were asking us to provide brown power for you at the exact same moment, yes, brown power will be slightly cheaper. For the city of Dayton at present, it's about 83 cents a month difference. So that's what you're talking about, and we save residents about $300 this year as the estimated. So it's well within that savings for the collective good, for what you're describing, the benefit. But it's one of the components that is put into power when you do an RPS or a REC standard that does cause it to be more under our current structure. But once it's apples to apples, the generations build out, you will see renewables cheaper on the surface. It's just the legacy advantage of having the existing fossil fuel fleet right now is what you're seeing there. Does that answer all your questions? Maybe I don't satisfy them, but answer them. Okay.
Okay, first and foremost, the MVCC program is about getting the best price for your constituents. We are not green motivated. That being said, there is a green option in our GOV AGs if you choose, and that's something that Jay has talked to the committee about wanting to include. Historically, right now, what we're seeing on bidding, green power is about a half a cent more expensive is what we're seeing out there in the market if you go with a Green Party or that kind of power on it. That's what we are seeing. I just did an RFP up in Cuyahoga County. It was that much more expensive per unit. So you can look at it however you want to look at it. We are motivated to save your constituents money. There will be an option for them on when the opt-out notices come. If they want to participate in the green power, they can do that, and that's an important part of it, if they want to choose to do that. But I also struggle with, you know, a lot of people are hurting these days. They want to save money. They want to be as low as priced as possible as they can. They can, you can go with this program. If they choose to do green later on, they can do that as well. It's up to them. Right now, currently, if you're doing green power, it is a REC program. It's probably most likely Texas, or West Texas wind. It's not even green power in the state of Ohio that you're buying if you go with that kind of program. So it's, it is what it is. I mean, you just have to look at it that way. We are out there to provide a service, an RFP service, to get the lowest possible price that we possibly can on it. Any questions technically on that or not trying to confuse MVCC program at all on it?
Well, I think it's important that if people want to do a green energy option, they have that capability of being able to do, whether it be step out of a program or step into a program. And I'm trying to think of this also from the standpoint, if people want to do that, is that it presents the least cumbersome avenue for, I would say, the city as being the center body, that you have 100 people that want to go green energy versus 1,000 people that don't. You know, which way do you want to have people start doing paperwork to shift from one direction to the other? And who gets the paperwork? Do we get it or do you get it? Now, as far as shifting out of a program to do one versus the other, and I, you know, that's, I'm trying to fight this from all different angles to say, okay, if people start coming to the city offices here and trying to, you know, understand what direction they're going and why things are the way they are and who's going to help them solve their problem, you know, comes a point where you say, throw up your hand and say, why did we even start this? So I'm trying to find that avenue which creates the fewest number of hurdles and bumps along the way. And I know personally from the standpoint, and this is one of the things that first came up, and just to take a moment here, you know, I started tracking my dad's utility bills and, you know, I don't know when he did it. It was like, I think, 2014, he got signed on with IGS. And IGS is wind power. And in October of 2021, he was paying 6.59 cents per 1,000 kilowatt. January's bill was 16.99 cents per 1,000 kilowatt. And quite frankly, I won't say exactly how I feel about it, but it's like, how did he manage to get stuck with getting, paying to build essentially almost three times what he was paying, you know, a year and a half ago?
I know exactly how that happened. There were a lot of customers, what they referred to as rollover. So a lot of those folks ended up seeing that sticker stock and called us immediately to get back into 7-cent power when they were seeing that 16.99 at IGS. I would clarify some specifics right now. So we have customizable program for our communities. So many of our communities now have climate goals. I say not all. We, again, are a very mixed community. Our member communities range from 22% poverty rates to 30% poverty rates in the case of the city of Dayton. So the city of Dayton was very price sensitive when they approached this topic, wanted to have climate goals, achieve that, do the right thing there. But in the process, we went, again, not having an RFP, being able to negotiate and work with, went to AP Energy, said we want a solution that's going to meet their needs, but it's going to be the most cost-effective solution possible. So for them, we actually procured hydro. So we went and got Montana Hydro at less than a tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour, which is why that Dayton is seeing significantly less as far as green power. So they're still, we feel very good about what they're doing. We went through a lot of environmental protocols to make sure there was no damage being done, but they were able to do something positive. Because you're absolutely right, this is a futures market. You're looking at what the future commodity price is and trying to make predictions accordingly. So for the public good, we feel that also achieving policy goals is an additional value add and a good reason to do it. Historically, a lot of states have had renewable portfolio standards. Ohio has made theirs voluntary in the short term. So this is not a new concept. Ohio is just kind of taking a timeout. We're one of two states that's done that. We've had very few folks that have chosen, again, we're seeing $300 savings this year in Dayton, estimated. Laurie's saying, I have to say that, but the numbers are there. But very, very few folks have decided to proactively drop down to the brown power. They are thrilled with the savings they're seeing. And the cities are getting accolades. So as the Hondas of the world are looking where to do other projects, where people are wanting to move for housing, they're looking at these signals of saying, this is a community that's doing above and beyond. So we have little coal mining communities now that are EPA clean power communities, and I'm happy for them. They're thrilled for it. This is a really mixed community, and they're seeing savings. So when we decided to go there and take our whole bundle, again, we are the fifth-largest city in the state on paper when you put our bundle together. I went to some of our more conservative communities, said, how do you guys feel about this? If we go this way and bundle everybody together instead of breaking it apart, you guys do this, you do this. And as long as we're saving money, great. They said, let's roll with it. And so we have, in fact, Logan was referenced here today. We actually paid for the chargers on those Tesla police cars. That was the last piece they needed for those to pencil out. They did run the numbers on maintenance costs, and for them, it was actually going to be about even. So those are the first in the state of Ohio. Logan is not a progressive community by any stretch, and I think they would say as much. But it's economics, it's math. So for us, green power is the future. We want to get off the Hampshire wheel, but these programs enable us to get there and enable our communities to literally be on the map for doing the right thing and create that positive accolades that they're going to get moving forward and to really shine a spotlight. But I think as far as cost, if you're, it's timing. It's all about timing. So again, I would emphasize, whatever model you guys choose, it's all about timing the market. So if you have with us somebody who's willing to watch the market daily, give you guidance along the way, take your feedback of when you guys are comfortable locking, again, Dayton went from May of '21 until February of '22, until the time is right for them. That is the most significant factor when it comes to pricing, is when you lock. Just watch gas prices. If you could pick when you're buying gas, or if you arbitrarily had to buy gas at the pump for the whole year and you're picking a day, you're going to probably guess wrong sometimes, guess right sometimes. But if you're watching the market, you can watch market patterns and see where you are relative to the market, the 52-week highs, the 52-week lows. That's the kind of analysis we're doing. We're looking for your community and advising you accordingly that as an energy advisor, we're not just running a basic RFP for you. We're not saying that, all right, May 1st, we're going to run the RFP. Here's your best prices. Good luck. We'll see you in two years. We're going to be there every step of the way with you saying, this is what the market conditions have been doing. Here's what they are doing. We think there's an opportunity here. We think you should wait. We are happy to provide that guidance. And again, we are not commission-based. It is just us. So it'll be Phil and all you'll be working with. So we'll be providing you that guidance with a bigger team around us, but we'll be the faces you'll see on the ground as you guys decide what's next for your future. So I think from a pure cost savings, again, the proof here locally, Dayton is saving 30%. I can't emphasize that enough at the moment. And that's what spurred all those conversations last summer night. When you sold the standard service offer, jumped from 4.8, you guys had the lowest rates in the entire state. When you sold the standard service offer, jumped from 4.8, you guys had the lowest rates in the entire state, up to 10.9 almost overnight, people noticed. And at that point, there was a real cost of doing nothing from a policy standpoint for a lot of communities like yourselves. And that's why we're happy to do education work for your voters, to help folks get out. So and we'd be happy to do the same for gas, frankly, to help get the education out to bring folks in that program as well. But it's a question of the two models. If you want to have a fixed moment in time when you're picking or if you want to have the flexibility of locking when the market is right. And I think that's a real strong distinction. And you guys will see that in the materials as well, drawing the distinction out. In addition, all the other value add. But I think on a pure savings, from a purchase standpoint, that's what you need to get your mind of which model. And if the RFP model is stuck with you, I would say that effectively we have an internal RFP model, the way that we procure the power itself. So that's being, we have a very open contract with AP Energy to, we have a lot of transparency between the two parties. But we also have a forced bid process on the inside. So that when we say today's the day, it's not, here's what you're going to give us. It's show us the three bids that you got for the power. And they have to show us that. So as they're going out procuring power at that given moment, we decide the time is right, we get those bids back to keep them honest. They don't say, here's company X, roll with this. So there's, that makes me feel good when I get the power and I feel good about sharing that with the communities as well. All good, sit down now. Thanks.
Thank you. So anything else on the last? Okay, so I think we've got enough information, you know, added on what we had before. So I think it's time to call for a motion, so.
Well, Philip and Luke, I appreciate everything that you've done in explaining it to us. And I would never speak ill of your nonprofit with neighboring communities that may be looking into it. But with Inglewood being our neighbor and so much of our community being interlapped with it, I think the continuity of us picking a provider that matches what Inglewood gets is extremely important for my consideration. I know that the residents in my ward would not be happy if they found out that their Inglewood neighbors literally across the street were paying a different rate than them, especially if it was lower. So therefore, I'm going to move to go with option number one, authorizing MVCC to act for the aggregator for electrical aggregation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Henning has made a motion to accept the first option, which would be the MVCC option, and second by Mr. Bachman. And can we have a roll call on this, please?
Mr. Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Unfortunately, I have to abstain.
And Stevens?
So it looks like we have unanimous with one abstention. I want to echo what Kenny said. I appreciate you coming in. It is not any slight to you, either of you individuals or your company. I think it's, you know, it is what it is. It's, we felt like going with a conglomerate of cities around here that it would be a little bit cheaper for our residents. And I'm happy with that decision. But hopefully, we'll, you know, be able to meet again. And we'll always have the door open for you folks. Okay? So thank you for coming in.
I would like to add a comment. And that being is that while the SOPA resolution wasn't adopted, I think the idea of green energy is something that has to be on the table for consideration going into the future. And I think it's something that Palmer Group, you know, if they're going to be involved with doing this, is that either they take an act or we're essentially including that as a viable part of this whole program. And that while potentially we're under this program, we see how it functions. And if there's a need to change, we have that in mind for making future decisions, whether we be present here when that time comes or our future council persons have to take that into serious consideration as to where we go in the future in terms of how we best serve the public. And I appreciate the efforts that you've put forth in doing this. I think it's valuable information. And I'm going to continue looking at what you provided me so I can have more information going into the future so I have a better idea as far as what's going forward. Because there's going to be questions that we're going to have to be able to answer. And you're a viable asset and resourced for that information. Hopefully, I can reach out to you if that necessary in the future. Either myself or Amanda or anyone else here can do that. But I do appreciate what you've done. And I'm not throwing my stuff away. I'm a hoarder of paper, so.
Okay, so again, we've chosen MVCC to provide the, to be our contact for the electrical aggregation. So all you folks are more than welcome to stay. If you want to leave, we won't be offended. But so if you wanted, like I said, you're welcome to stay if you want. But we are going to move on with our agenda now. And we're going back, RTA? Okay.
We want to read Resolution 19 first, Mike.
I'm sorry, yes.
Resolution R 022319, a resolution authorizing Miami Valley Communications Council to act as the city of Clayton, Ohio's governmental aggregator for electrical aggregation.
Again.
We did this one.
Yeah, we already did that.
No, I thought we were choosing to choose them first. We didn't actually agree to legislation. That's fine. You can go ahead and do it. It's not going to affect the legislation.
Yeah. We have a roll call, please.
Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Abstain.
And Stevens?
Okay, again, thanks, everyone, for coming in for that. So we're going to revert back to our agenda, and we are going to welcome RTA.
Well, good evening, council. Thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Braden Polachikio. I'm the Chief Customer and Business Development Officer for the Greater Dayton RTA. And I just wanted to provide the city a quick update on RTA, where we are today and where we're looking to go in the future. Definitely want to show off the Clayton bus that's out there on the street. It'll continue to be on the street for the life of the vehicle, which will be at most another 10 years. So that'll keep rolling. The vehicle is available to you to utilize for community events. If you reach out to us, we can have the vehicle brought up. We know we've had a lot of communities that have used it. Some used it this past summer as cooling stations at different community events, but they've used it as a way to showcase the community. But just know that bus will be on the street for many more years to come in the different areas that we serve. Little bit about us, we're 500 employees serving the entire Montgomery County area as well as parts of Western Green County. Over 65% of our customers are utilizing our service to get the jobs, followed by healthcare appointments and educational opportunities. This was never more clear than during the start of the pandemic where our ridership, while we did lose some riders during the start of the pandemic, a lot of our riders continued to use our service. A lot of them are essential workers, and that maintained throughout the majority of the pandemic. This year, we are celebrating our 50th anniversary. We kicked that off last year. It's a year-long celebration. For those of you that have been in Montgomery County longer than 50 years, you know, we've been rolling on the streets. This is the Greater Dayton RTA's 50th anniversary that we're celebrating this year. And we're doing promotions throughout the year for our customers as we celebrate the 50 years, as well as we have a fleet of 50th anniversary buses that are rolling through the different communities as well. One of the exciting things that we were able to roll out to our customers two years ago was our new system, Tap Pay. This actually was very helpful during the pandemic because what it allowed was for a contactless, safer way to pay during that time. But really, the key to this new system is that it's helped our customers save money. Traditional public transit payment systems often leave those who are least able to afford, perhaps low-income, unbanked, underbanked, end up paying more at the end of the month than those that can afford upfront typical monthly passes. What our Tap Pay system does is ensure that customers pay no more than the daily max rate or the monthly max rate. So that allows our customers to hold on to their money longer as well as never pay more than the monthly rate. Also allows our customers to manage family accounts as well. Customers utilize either a smart card or they can use their smartphones when boarding our vehicle. And in the future, starting this year, we'll be rolling out a pilot where customers can start to use their debit or credit cards that are contactless to tap on the readers and it'll apply that same, what's called fare capping, so that they never pay more than the daily or monthly rate. Little overview of our services. Right now, we're currently running 18 bus routes throughout the county, over 2,500 bus stops. We have our connect programs of services, which are talked about, as well as operating the same service seven days a week at the moment.
Just, if you don't mind, or the viewers that may watch this, when you said that individual riders can use their credit cards, that's directly on the bus? With the tap systems on the bus?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's, to equate it, it's no different than if some of your grocery store change and stuff now, you can utilize contactless payments. There, it works the same way. Our RTA connect programs, which I'll talk about on-demand here shortly, is here within the city of Clayton as well. We have our paratransit program, otherwise known as, some may have heard of it, called Project Mobility. That's a service for those who are cognitively or physically unable to use the bus route service. This service is available to them through an application process. And once they become eligible, they receive door-to-door service through this transportation. We also launched almost two years ago now, our 5310 program, named after the federal program that's allowed us to subsidize the cost of these trips. These are for individuals who are 65 and older or may have a disability, and it allows them to travel at a much reduced rate anywhere within the county. That's a healthcare appointment, the grocery store, or the pharmacy. So with these two programs, both paratransit and the 5310 program combined, we're able to provide 100% coverage to older adults within the county, within the city of Clayton, as well as persons with disabilities. Currently, the city of Clayton has two bus routes running through the community. The first is the Route 7 as well as the Route 16, in addition to our on-demand and our paratransit service. I mentioned the on-demand service earlier. I remember coming actually here back in 2018 when we extended that service here within the city of Clayton. We used to have bus routes that would run through the city on a very limited basis. One trip or so in the morning, one trip or so in the evening, no weekend service. Really not the best bus route service. Ridership not really all that high. When we implemented this program, what we were able to do is provide extended coverage beyond the routes that were running out here. So what it provides is almost 24/7 service for those within the city of Clayton to be able to connect to our larger bus route network or connect within that green area that you see there on the map. Customers access the on-demand program either two ways. One, they can download the Uber or Lyft app, enter a code, and receive the free transportation. Or they can give us a call, and we can actually book directly to Uber or Lyft for them. We know not everyone owns a smartphone, so we obviously wanted to make the phone an available option. If customers perhaps are minors, because Uber and Lyft doesn't transport minors, or someone needs additional assistance, or maybe they utilize a mobility device, we actually come out with our paratransit vehicles and provide that transportation. Over 70% of the customers that utilize on-demand in this zone itself are connecting to our bus route services. So it's essentially providing those connections. A lot of them are transferring at the Northwest Transit Center there in Trotwood. But we have seen a lot of usage of this, particularly to some of those manufacturing and job sites that are not quite on our main route routes, but allow them to meet those different shifts that are in that area. A little bit about where we're going. In 2019, we developed our RTA Connect She redesign plan. Unfortunately, the pandemic changed that plan for us and the way and the fact of how we need to look at the way that people are traveling. Our ridership has decreased. We've seen a leveling out of our ridership. We don't have that quite AM and PM peak like we used to anymore. However, we have a more sustained ridership across the entire day, as well as Saturdays and Sundays. What our new network is going to do for customers is reduce connections. And I'll share some of what those might look like here as we go through the public input process, which is currently ongoing. Overall, the system impact will improve for individuals within the county and here within the city of Clayton. Over 70% of residents that are living within a quarter mile of any of our services, not just bus routes, are going to have access to RTA. We're reaching 80% of individuals who are low-income. 85% of the jobs that are here in Montgomery County are within quarter-mile reach of our services, as well as we'll be maintaining 100% coverage of major hospitals like we do today. What we are proposing that's going to be in the city of Clayton is the continued use of the on-demand service. And I want to thank the city manager, Amanda, for meeting with us a month or so ago to talk about some of the residential and economic development that's happening here in Clayton and nearby to make sure that our on-demand service was still within those areas. But also, too, what we're taking a look at is, as some of this economic development comes into play, looking at the needs and the ridership that we're seeing on that on-demand service to see if there might be a need to perhaps reinstate bus route services in the future as we're able to do so. That has been the one benefit of putting this on-demand program in place. Unlike bus route services where they run along specific routes, on-demand allows us to see specific starting and endpoints. So we can actually look to see true patterns and look to look at capacities and see, perhaps, is it necessary to put a bus route back into the area? One of the other changes we're looking at is with the Route 16 as well. That's, it's going to be a good addition because what that'll allow customers to do from our Northwest Transit Center, where the 16 currently doesn't serve, is customers can transfer at the Northwest Transit Center via on-demand, which will then give them access to places like the Meyer and Inglewood, the Kroger, as well as the Walmart. So it's definitely going to provide some grocery access. But again, really not seeing any change, major changes to the service. But again, as economic development happens and we're able to make these changes, we will revise them and perhaps look at bus route service. But I've been telling all the communities when we go out, we are 75 drivers short right now. I know everyone's going through the hiring deal right now. We are over 20 mechanics short. Altogether, we have over 100 openings in the agency. So a lot of our expansion of service, and again, the on-demand program is beneficial from the standpoint of, it's not relying solely on all RTA employees to provide that service. But at the end of the day, we still have 75 drivers in order to start to expand these services and put them more out into the public. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Yeah, if you didn't start until 1972, how did I get home from Chaminade in 1961?
You got home?
It was a yellow bus that ran on wires above over her head.
You got home by the Miami Valley Regional Transportation Association.
I have just, I guess, a comment more than anything else. First of all, I do appreciate public transportation. I think it's really something that's underutilized. I think we should be using that more. But with that being said, you know, I see the RTA buses, and they're beautiful, just like the one that has, you know, our logo on it and everything. But they're also huge, it seems like. And I mean, why, I don't know. It just, it doesn't seem like they're always full ridership and awfully large buses. And I don't know, I'm just thinking, why wouldn't they be smaller?
So I can tell you that we do have some full buses. So when you look at where the core part of our ridership is, it's definitely within the city of Dayton limits. You look at what we call our city routes. Those buses are very full. These are 40-foot buses. When you tend, when those buses tend to get further out, that's where the ridership then just slowly starts to drop off from those. So oftentimes, what you may be seeing is you're getting towards the end of those lines. It's, there was one transit agency, they put a great video together because that question's asked a lot, and they did a time-lapse video showing the inside of a bus and then a map up top, just seeing how packed. And then as it gets towards the end, it's, you know, there's no one on it. But I can tell you, we are ordering smaller buses. So these are 40-foot buses. We've got an order of 30-foot buses coming on here. And you will see more of our vehicles doing it, some of our smaller white vehicles, but more of this on-demand transportation, more so than big buses. Because we understand that it makes no sense to run a very large bus that's carrying two people. It's really just not a good use of resources. And so you will start to see some of the smaller vehicles coming out. But we will still have those large 40-foot buses on some of our more core routes.
I know you guys have a good social media presence. And I was wondering, because our team does a good job of also getting social media information out there and really doing informative videos. Is there any way you could maybe have your social media digital person come up here and record how the on-demand zone booking works for our zone for then us to share to residents and like all the civic groups in this area to let them know? I forget the name of the gentleman who is... I forget the name of the gentleman who was at our first suburbs committee meeting.
Nathan Owens?
Nathan, yes, thank you. So Nathan was there, and he spoke to us, and it was very insightful. And it was a lot of the same information. And I was taking notes then, I was just taking some more notes. But if we could have some type of video to share with our rotary and different groups here in the community, I think it'd be very helpful.
Yeah, we could definitely do a customized video. I can tell you, on-demand's one of those ones where, once people hear about it, then you do tend to see the usage increase.
Just one more comment. I hope Amanda made some notes on using the bus, because I think that's a great idea. If we can, we have, you know, a couple of events that we use, we could, I think you could use it.
Yeah, we've already thought about asking them to come out for our fire, police, and public service outing, and then also for the fireworks, so. That's true. I don't know how far the windows come down on that. Could I, could council members ride in the bus?
Uh, fortunately, the windows only come down at like the very top. So you just have kind of like a little, you know, hand coming out there. But yeah, you can definitely, we have people put it in a parade. I know Centerville, for their Fourth of July parade, we actually, our maintenance team put on a, like a tailhook on the back of the bus so that there could be an American flag that kind of, that goes behind the bus. So yeah, there's, there's different things we can do.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Um, piggybacking on what Kenny said. What about them coming out to do the senior lunch and learn, one month? And then you do a presentation for seniors at the luncheon? I mean, that's something to look for in the future.
So I can, I'll have Jack Coons, our development director, reach out about doing one of those.
Yep.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much for coming in.
Well, thank you for your time.
We appreciate you. Okay, we're gonna move on our agenda to new business. We have several pieces of new business. And we read the first ordinance, please.
Ordinance O-022302. An ordinance approving amendment of section 121.01, city manager of chapter 121 of the Clayton Codified Ordinances.
Evening.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Coming to you tonight with the, currently Amanda's authority to approve a purchase order. We want to get to some supplies, materials, or contracted services, 25,000. It's been 25,000 since I've been a city. Just like we did it with increasing the bidding threshold, with the cost of everything has gone up. We'd like to raise that just 10,000 to 35,000 to help just expedite some of the, some of the smaller projects we're doing, with having to bring it to the council, have that approval, because it's over hers. And currently, the competitive bidding threshold is 64,498. So, you know, it's way below that bidding threshold. And then still, anything over 35,000 would come to you guys for approval as well.
I'll move for approval.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let it show, let the record show that was unanimous. And will you read the second ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-022303. An ordinance authorizing removal of specific assessments for trash collection previously submitted in error to the Montgomery County Auditor and declaring an emergency.
So for some of our delinquent trash bills, we still had some on our old system that people still haven't paid when we did the billing. And then we're getting, with the agreement we have with Republic, we get billings, delinquencies from them as well. We get multiple times throughout the year from them. And when we were trying to merge those together, somehow we got five that we picked up twice. So we just need to get a notice sent down to the counties, so they can take that off the taxes for the residents.
Do we need to approve this as an emergency? I'll move for the emergency.
Second.
Motion to declare an emergency on this resolution by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll move for the motion, too.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that was unanimous also. Will you read the third resolution, please?
Resolution R-022321. A resolution reappointing Christine Bachman as member of the local Board of Tax Review.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. I think we need to do a roll call on this one.
Mr. Bachman?
Abstain.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. And let the record show that was unanimous with one abstention. Will you read the second resolution, please?
Resolution R-022322. A resolution reappointing Tom Walker as a member of the local Board of Tax Review.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution as written by Mr. Bachman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that was unanimous also. And will you read the third resolution, please?
Resolution R-022323. A resolution authorizing the negotiation, execution, and delivery of governmental lease purchase agreement number 008-0883355-300, in principal amount not to exceed $166,650.99 between City of Clayton, Ohio, and the Huntington National Bank, and prescribing other details in connection herewith.
Mayor, just as a point of procedure on this one, I would like to request that we have a motion, because we did not receive sample legislation on this from Huntington until the original version, or we had the original version. Then after that was published, then we received the sample legislation from Huntington. So we could have a motion to accept the amended version of this resolution. And part and parcel of that resolution is also replacing Exhibit A and B in the original with Exhibit A, which is the lease agreement. Exhibit A and B in the original were the quotes. Exhibit A in the revised is the lease agreement. So if we could have a motion to amend it that way?
So moved.
Everything Martina said, second.
I think it's great that you saved $80,000, too, Martina, however you or Kevin did that.
Fantastic.
Motion to approve the amended resolution by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. Mr. Henning? Yeah, I think I heard several. By Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And then you would need to vote on the amended resolution.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion to approve the amended resolution by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous also. Will you read the fourth resolution, please?
Resolution R-022324. A resolution authorizing the city manager and finance director to engage Plattenburg and Associates, Inc. to audit the basic financial statements of the city for the years ending December 31, 2022 through 2026, at a cost not to exceed $28,900 annually.
So basically, seven, a little over $7,000 a year for this entity to audit our flawless lauder or finance director?
It's 28.9 a year.
Oh, 28,000 annually, sorry, I just divided it out.
Yeah.
Oh.
And that is assuming, part of that cost is assuming that we are a single audit with all the ARPA monies we received. But I don't think we're gonna be a single audit for 2022, so the cost may be a little less.
Okay.
Don't make any mistakes, I'll be careful.
Try not to, if not, I'll quit, so.
All the retirement withholdings are happening now.
Yeah.
So a total of around 120,000, sorry.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, this is a new firm. We had Clark Schaefer Haggott for 10 years. And last year, we had the state auditors come back in. The state auditor's office does, does run the bidding process for accounting firms when they, when they come in and do audits. They give us a little bit of leeway on point systems. We can apply some points to us, but we just can't pick the cheapest. But Plattenburg's been around for a while. I remember dealing with them when I was with the state, so. And they have a good working relationship with Julian Group, who helps us out with our compilation, so I don't see any problems.
You feel like the cost is-
It's consistent with what, yep.
Okay.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. And will you read the fifth resolution, please?
Resolution R-022325. A resolution to authorize and approve purchase order.
So back in last year, we started a, had a, fire department had a issue with the way we were calculating some of the additional, we call it work period pay. So they filed a grievance, went to some mediation and arbitration, I guess, services, received the bill, which was about $10,000. Then it split between half us and half with the Fire Association, the union. So we were going through that, and we did not open up a purchase order for that, so we need to come to you. It's over the $5,000 threshold we have. We need to open up, PO up for $5,059.85 to pay the arbitrator for his expenses.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous also. Okay, thank you. We'll move to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few items for you this evening. First, a few news and events. The Northmont Dance Party will be held at Meadowbrook Thursday, February 23rd, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. Everyone's invited. The Easter egg hunt will be Saturday, April 1st, at 9:30 a.m. at Meadowbrook, Clayton. And our next senior lunch and learn that people can still register for is Wednesday, March 15th, 2023, at 12:00 p.m. And people do need to register for that the Wednesday prior to the 15th. That way, we know how many people are gonna be there for lunch. So the park board did meet on the 14th, and Director Coons spoke to them about possibly reducing the number of people sitting on the board right now. The bylaw say nine. In their discussion, they did decide they would prefer to stay nine people. They said that, you know, there are people on the board who have been there for a very long time, and that they think that new blood may be good to get on there. So as long as council is fine with keeping it at nine, we'll start advertising for those positions. We actually had, you know, someone submit a resume today, who wants to serve on that board. So we'll start advertising, we'll get names to you, we'll get those resumes to you, and then we'll bring legislation for two positions on the park board. Chief Garver did come to me this week, and he was talking about the swearing-in, since we are a collaborative. And he said that he and the other fire chiefs had discussed the possibility of rather than each city swearing-in the firefighters on their own, waiting until there were a group of them, and then swearing them in all together. So Clayton, Inglewood, and Union would have one event, and they would all be sworn in at that one event. That would not be at our council meeting. So it would be an additional meeting that you all would be invited to come to. I told chief that if that is what the fire chiefs and the fire personnel are happy with, I'm comfortable doing that, but I wanted to leave it up to council to make that decision. You know, if you want to have, because our, they'll still be our employees, and if you want our employees sworn in at our council meeting, that's absolutely fine. So it's really, I'm kind of opening that up to discussion.
Good with what chief wants. Hopefully, he can make it.
Could they rotate it around to the various buildings?
Yes, it would be, it would be rotated around to various buildings. It won't necessarily be on a council meeting evening, but it would be rotated around to different buildings. Absolutely.
Well, we could still have them come in.
We could, absolutely. We could still have them come in, yeah.
Everybody's okay with that? I think we're all, seem okay with that.
I'll let chief know.
Okay.
And that's all I really have for you this evening.
Any questions or comments for the birthday, I mean, our city manager? Nope, okay. So we'll move on to the visitors' comments. We're left down with one visitor. Excellent. Thank you, sir. Thanks for the good work. So we'll go with council. Dennis, Mr. Lieberman, we'll start with you.
Just wanted to wish Amanda a happy birthday. And normally, I would, you know, take maybe about 30 to 45 minutes to make my comments, but I know she has a bourbon and taco waiting for her at home, so that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Kelly.
Happy birthday, Amanda. Enjoyed this evening.
Mr. Merkel?
Aye, just keep it short. Happy birthday.
Mr. Gorman?
I too would like to wish Amanda 29th birthday, a happy birthday, yes.
Who was the first to text you this morning from this group? I, oh, that's good. Happy birthday, thank you for all you do, thank you to all the staff, we appreciate it.
Mr. Bachman?
I was the only one to text you a Ron Swanson meme of happy birthday. Happy birthday, that's all I had.
Well, I'm gonna keep it short also, happy birthday. Again, thanks to everyone for, all the, all of our staff and the council for keeping us running smooth here. I think the aggregation presentations were both excellent. I think that, you know, they're both excellent companies, and hopefully, you know, we made the right call. You know, we'll, we'll keep close eyes on it and make sure. And thanks to, you know, all of our residents for making Clayton a great place to live, so. Other than that, is there a-
Mayor, we have a need for an executive session-
That's right.
-for matters pertaining to employment of a public employee.
So we do have needs for an executive session?
I move for executive session.
Yep.
Second.
Motion to adjourn to executive session by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Roll call.
Okay, we are back from executive session.
I'll move for adjournment.